All right, good evening. I am calling to order the Monday, August 11th, 2025 zoning board of appeals meeting. It's a hybrid meeting, so we have folks here in the meeting. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Not now.
Not now, but it's also a Zoom meeting, so people can Zoom in if they so choose. So tonight's agenda, we are at our first meeting of the year for the zoning board of appeals. And so we have new members and we are going to do our reorganization of the board to start, which is election of the column officers. Then we're going to do minute approval. We have one application. We'll do adjournment, but before that, we have to start off with the roll call is pointing out by Paul. So Kate Power Burke?
Here.
Kai Leffler?
Here.
Charles Tremblay?
Here.
Paul Cattigan?
Here.
And Kevin McCall?
Who's absent?
And Alan Evelyn could not be here. Thank you, Paul. All right, so we are going to start off with the election of chair and vice chair. Do we have any members interested in the chair position?
I'm not interested, but I'll do it.
Okay. I think that qualifies. Do I have a nomination or anyone else want to be the chair?
No.
You can ask that first. Any nominations for chair? Would someone? I will nominate Paul.
I will second him.
Right, second.
Any discussion on Paul as our chairperson?
Nice to have all that experience with us.
There you go. Can I get a vote on approval of Paul? Looks like it's unanimous.
I'll stay.
Now, at this point, I could turn the meeting over to the chair and let you take over, or I can finish the election.
Your preference.
Okay, I'll finish that.
Action.
Oh, so the second is election of vice chair.
I would nominate Kevin McDonald to maintain that position of vice chair.
Second.
Okay, and I'm willing to do that, so.
Wonderful, wonderful.
All in favor?
That's your stuff, right? Can I get a vote, all in favor?
All in favor.
Okay, there we go.
For positive one extension.
Our third position is election of secretary.
Has to be a member of the board.
It does have to be.
Has to be a member of the board.
I haven't volunteered for secretary.
No, I just can't.
Okay, so our current secretary has been Alan Evelyn. Alan could not be here tonight, and I was not able to get in touch with him ahead of time. So I can certainly nominate him. So I'm going to ask Galen Galey, can we pause on that one? And elect the secretary in our subsequent meeting? Feels like we don't want to, you know, go ahead and nominate someone and elect them to be in here.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I think that's fine if everyone's comfortable not waiting until Alan's here. My understanding is, you know, when you don't show up to the meeting, you get volunteered for things.
Well, we could do that.
So can I nominate?
I'm going to nominate Alan Evelyn then.
Do you have a secretary?
So, right, but excuse me, why are we doing that if Lynn is going to do the work?
Well, she's going to do it.
We still need to have one.
You need a board member who's the official secretary, and Lynn is going to really do a majority of the work, right?
I'm going to do the minutes.
Yeah.
But she's not a board member.
So there'll be very little for the secretary of the board to actually do.
If Lynn gets sick and can't come, what happens?
Someone will have to help fill in. But luckily, so Lynn is a part-time, she helps as needed as support staff for the important boards of town. Congratulations on being one of the important boards in town. So in the event that, you know, heaven forbid Lynn was not available to be at the meeting, she also has the recording of the meeting minutes that she can type in on her own time.
Well, let's wait and see if Alan will go forward next meeting, if that's okay. You say if we could postpone?
You can, I mean, it's not, I don't think it's the end of the world.
What do you think?
You have a motion and second of four, though.
We have a motion, so.
We could vote for him and then he could resign if he doesn't want.
That's it?
Oh, okay.
He already had it, so we're not. He already had it, he already had his position, so it would just be.
That's why I nominated him.
Okay, well, that's a good point.
He's been nominated and seconded, so.
Right, okay, both were in favor. Okay.
He's the only one that got five votes.
Supermajority for Alan. I love it. So I think at this point, I should probably turn the meeting over to the new chair.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So do we have, I'm sorry, but did we have any of the prior minutes or we're tabling that?
We're tabling that.
Okay, so we're going to table the approval of the minutes from March 25, 2024, and October 28, 2024, until the board members have a copy of the minutes that they can review and vote on. So that'll bring us to our primary agenda item, which is the application by Lisa Carroll for home occupation. It's noted in the agenda, the applicant is requesting a home occupation to bake and sell cookies and breads out of her home at Seven Oak Street. That's Assessor Tax MAP 9 Block 2 Lot 4, and that's in the Village Residential Zone. So I just want to do a couple of quick things before we get to your application that kind of has to do with your application. This is just a little housekeeping. There's a provision in the application itself that says that it's supposed to be mailed out to all of us prior to the meeting, hard mailed. So that wasn't done, but I know that from my reading, I thought that Lisa couldn't get our addresses. But anyway, that can be corrected in the future, but for now, I would move that we waive that requirement for this applicant at this hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so that requirement is waived. Second one is that the bylaws provide, don't I sound so formal already? The bylaws provide that all submissions ought to be made prior, at least seven days prior to the meeting, if the parties behind those submissions are going to try to make something off of them. So I don't know how clear that was beforehand, and we have one letter from One of Butter, which is dated less than seven days before, and we had some kind of response from the applicant to some questions that was also not quite seven days before, both for good reasons, I'm sure. So I would like to make a motion that we waive that seven-day requirement we've got to this application.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Very good. Great. And then, does anybody, you saw what's required to be submitted. To me, the application looked complete. Does anybody not feel that the application was complete, the submissions? And all the stuff that we needed was with it?
Everything required was there.
Okay, so we all agree that, we don't need a motion, but we all agree that it's an application complete.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I want to point one thing out to everybody, that the bylaws of the board, doesn't say that you need a majority of the board that's in attendance, which is five, so it would be three, but you actually need, for an affirmative, for approval, you need a majority of the membership of the board. So there's one member that's not here tonight, but we still account him. So for an affirmative application, you need the votes of four members up here tonight. Okay, so great, thanks for going through all that paperwork stuff. So how would you like us to address you?
Paul?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Excuse me, I would just like to share that two years ago, when Ms. Carroll was going through a change in her personal life, I did a market analysis for her and nothing to do with cooking or any of that, I'm sorry to say. I just wanted to share that, I don't feel like I'm biased in any way. You know, I can still make a good decision for our community, I just wanted to share that, so.
I don't see that as a conflict in any.
Well, I don't either, I just want to be upfront.
I don't, yeah, thank you, thank you. I don't think we need a vote on that because I don't see that as conflict in any.
I'm like him, I need a dozen cookies.
Well, now we're moving in the conflict direction. So Lisa, if you would please come up to the microphone first and make sure, I don't know if we technically opened the meeting, but.
I don't think so.
Okay, so we're technically open the meeting at this point in time. And then how would you like us to address you?
So I'd just like to take the opportunity to sort of state to everyone here who's listening what I shared with you when I came in, which is first, an apology to any of my abutters or neighbors who would ever believe that I would turn my home into a bakery with a sign and ever have anyone drive up to my house and purchase goods. That was not my intention at all. I just wanted to bake cookies and bring them to a farmer's market, or maybe sell them online a little bit, but I would never run a business, it's not even a bit, I wouldn't call it a business. I just want to bake in my home, no one would ever know it's going on if I weren't here tonight. I just wanted to follow the rules about how to do it. And so I reached out and researched online how I was supposed to do it. So I contacted Travis at the state, I believe his name was. He came out to my home and he looked at my kitchen and educated me on cooking in your kitchen and gave me a license number because in order to provide anything to a farmer's market or a local store, I needed to have that. And then I said, well, what about my town, don't I have to do something with my town? I just wanted to make sure I was crossing every T and dotting, I mean, dotting every I before doing this. And so that's why I went through this whole process. And I feel horrible that my neighbors would ever think that I would turn our sweet little street that has become my safe place and my home in a very difficult time in my life into anything different than that. It's my home, it's my happy place and would have spent a pretty difficult time, and it would never be anything more than that, and I would never do anything to change that for Oak Street. So I just want everybody to know that.
Well, that's great.
So that's it, so.
So there's a few requirements, and we should probably get those of record as to how you either conform or don't conform to the requirements. So before we particular those, does anybody have any questions in particular?
No.
For the applicant? At this stage, you can still ask them later, if you don't have enough.
Okay.
I have one later, one quick question later.
So, you know, one requirement is that everything that you're going to do is carried on wholly within the building. So your production and your baking is all going to be inside?
Yeah, no one would ever know I was baking if I didn't tell everyone because I thought I had to.
And then there's kind of a limitation on who can do this. Do you have an intention of hiring anybody to assist you?
No.
Is it just going to be you that's going to be doing the home occupation?
Yes, it's just me.
Okay.
I live alone, it's just me.
I'm just following along, everybody, with these. If you look at the memorandum that we were given, you could follow along the way. So next is that, I think you've already made this clear, at least casually beforehand, that you're not allowed to have an exterior display, no exterior signs, other than those that are specifically permitted. But do you have any intention of having any signage?
None.
None. And do you have any need to do any kind of exterior storage of any materials?
Nope.
No. And there's nothing else that will be done in the exterior of your building that would alert anybody that there is a home occupation going on in there?
No.
Okay, great. This is just, the next step, the next requirement is that you don't generate objectionable noise, vibration, smoke, dust, electrical disturbance, odor, heat, glare, or activities at unreasonable hours. Do you intend on doing any of those things?
I'll say burns, you know, I don't intend on doing that.
Okay, all right. Do you anticipate to have any, is anybody going to come and deliver anything to the house?
No.
Is anybody going to come and pick up anything at the house?
No.
Are you going to sell anything directly from the house so a consumer would come to the house to purchase it?
No.
Okay. So then, I guess you don't have any additional need for off-street parking because it's just going to be her and her residential parking. So there's a requirement that you not use more than 20% of the dwelling unit's floor area towards this. So I don't know if you did any calculations on the square footage of your home and the square footage of your kitchen.
My kitchen isn't huge, it's not a smaller part of the home. I don't know, it's probably 12 feet by maybe five feet that I would be using within the house. And it's probably, I don't know, it's like maybe 3,000 square feet at the most. So it's just a tiny, the kitchen, that's all I'm using, my refrigerator, my stove, and a couple of cabinets for flour and sugar.
How many rooms do you have in the house?
I have one, two, three, four. I have four bedrooms and like two living rooms and three bathrooms and a kitchen.
I will do that discussion later on, but I assume that's less than, this kitchen is less than 20% of the property, unless somebody else wants to talk about that. Do you, are you going to use any, anything, do you have any accessory structures on the property? Okay, so then you won't be using any accessory structures?
No, sorry, I should say no.
All right, you're not in the free enterprise of the farm and forest zone, and you have no other home occupation at this time, is that right?
Right.
Okay.
Can I just interrupt real quick, because on the one data from the GIES that shows, it shows that the living area is 2,765 square feet.
Okay.
So if you have a 60-foot square foot kitchen, that's easily less than.
Very good.
Yeah.
Big kitchen.
Right.
Did you have a question?
No, I just said it would be one very big kitchen if it was more than 20.
I didn't know if you had one foot before.
Well, I did actually, it's, and I think you've answered it, but I just want to clarify. You did say you're planning on selling off-site, basically like at farmer's markets, but you also mentioned that you might take orders or do things online. And again, does that mean, verify again, that it would not include people coming to the house to pick up orders?
No.
Okay.
I mean, that would be like, I don't know, like if people liked the products and they said, oh, can you send us some, then I would bring them to the post office and send them. But there's nothing about like mass production, no.
Becoming the next famous Amos and coming to your.
Yeah, no, no.
Anybody else have any questions to the applicant right now?
No.
No.
Okay, so that's great, thank you.
You are going.
You could have seen so much. So the meeting is still open, we're not going to hear from the code office, right, Galen?
Nope.
Okay, and nothing from the office of planning with regard to this application?
No, you have our memo for the outstanding items, and I think she's addressed that in her presentation.
Very good, very good. So we have one letter from a neighbor. Is John Eagleson here? No, and is Susan Graham here? No. So we have one letter that was dated August 8, 2025, from John Eagleson and Susan Graham. Did everybody get a copy of that on the board? Did everybody on the board have the chance to read that letter?
Yes.
Okay, does anybody have any questions as a result of that letter?
No.
Well, I think one of her big questions was, does this home occupation transfer, if she were to sell the home, does it transfer to the next?
And it does.
To the next owner, and does that now grandfather in a business into the neighborhood? Was the question that I.
My understanding of the ordinance is that it does not, that this is like a personal.
It's name and deed specifically.
Yeah, and if Lisa sold the property, the approval would not run with the property. It's not like an easement or something of that, right?
Goes with the name.
Yes.
Yeah, normal standard practice for conditional uses, at least for the planning board level, they usually put in their findings the fact that if someone wants to transfer said ownership, the planning board has to be notified of it if they want to continue using that use, so.
So I think in Susan's note, that was a major concern that she had.
But I think with the home occupation, I think it would require a new, a new application. It absolutely does, I think so. So I think that, I think that that addresses the principal question in the letter of your neighbors. But everybody has managed to read this, or what?
I just had one other question, so the sixth point on the letter is one where it says if she were to make any changes, so if your business does very well and you decide to hire a person, what they made the comment in the sixth point, which is, you know, future changes cannot be approved by code enforcement, it must be authorized by ZBA. So I just wanted to check to see if that were the case, does she really need to come back here to get reapproval if she needs to hire somebody?
That's a great question, actually.
So if we state it in the findings of facts, she would have to come back to the board? So that's up to you, if you want me to put it up in the findings?
The way I'm looking at it is, it sounds like the issues were about signage, not being a place of business where customers and people are doing deliveries. If that's not impacting, you know, parking or anything else, if she has somebody that she's hiring part-time because her business is doing well and they're parking in her driveway and all the things, I don't know why we'd want to have to have her come back just for that point.
Our approval could say that she could have no, she could have no more than is allowed for the ordinance.
Yeah.
And the other piece of that is, you need to meet the parking requirement of the ordinance as well. It says you have to, you know, be parking on the driveway, not on the street, you know.
So do you understand what we're saying here? Yeah, no, I think that's a great way to address it. All right, so what I'd like to do is to make this letter from John Eagleson and Susan Graham a part of our record. Okay, anybody have an issue with making it final?
No.
Not at all.
Very good, okay, so that's part of our record. So we have a few people in the audience today. Would anybody like to make a statement with regard to the application?
I just have one question.
If you would.
Tom Russell, it's West Street. I just wanted to, my question would be, is this a slippery slope to, the next person comes in and says, I want to sell t-shirts and I want to open a fish store, and I, granted, I love all those things, but maybe not my backyard, unfortunately is what they say. But is that something that's now, someone could just say, well, you approved that, so now I can do mine, you know? Or is everything unique?
Everything, everything must pass through, you know, the planning office and then before this board, and it has to meet very, a lot of requirements in.
Okay.
So I think that that particular slope, it couldn't go down that because you can't really have, you can't be selling out of your place and have a lot of traffic that would be disruptive to the neighborhood. That requirement would probably address almost all of those.
Yeah, I think that's what everybody that I, you know, kind of had conversations with were most concerned about is.
Yeah, and all the requirements of home occupation are in code, so you can look that up and you can see what the stipulations are that are attached.
Sure, what was your address?
Seven West Street.
Seven West, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any statements, questions, concerns? Going once, going twice? Did anybody come onto Zoom that has any question?
Phone caller, but no hand raised.
No hand raised, okay. So at this time then, since we've heard from the public and we've heard from the applicant, and there is no input from the code and planning office but for the memorandum, which was very helpful that we were submitted, then I would move at this time that we close the public meeting. All in favor? Okay, so let's discuss. Anybody got anything to say?
Personally, I don't have any further questions or objections.
I, yeah, I think the standards seem to have been met and the sort of conditions laid out in the abutter's letter, I think, are pretty much what we're thinking anyway. And with that, particularly the requirement that if there were a substantial change to the, or serious change to the mode of operating, that it would then trigger having to come back to the board. If something like that is included in it, I, you know, what's being asked for right now sounds to me like it fits within a, comfortably within the ordinance.
All right, the, so we have the, in the application, we do have the deed of record, which is one thing that we would need in our decision, that we have the deed of record, which is at Book 19568, page 525. And then we already can determine that the application is complete, that everything that we needed to see is there. Property's been properly identified. The use has been spelled out by the applicant, so we could rely on her language. It is a single-family residence, right, Lisa? I don't think we've verified that, or she's nodding affirmatively, it is a single-family residence. So we've reviewed all the relevant sections of the ordinance, and. I'm just looking to see if there's anything else that we need to address. I think we could say that this is something that is customarily carried on in a dwelling unit or a structure, customarily accessory to a dwelling unit. It's just going to be family members, it's just going to be Lisa. And it doesn't really change the character of the neighborhood, I think we've all confirmed with that. So I guess we could entertain a motion. No discussion, yes? So what I'd like is, somebody make a motion that would specifically note that each of the very particular requirements have been met, but we don't have to read them all off, but if we could just make the code reference to the, you know. 247-76A, 1-3, and B 1-9, that motion to that effect. So you might want a motion that's. Yeah, you can state all of that, but then make sure you hit this here.
Oh.
Those are our requirements.
Okay, so I make a motion that we approve the request for a home occupation to bake and sell cookies and breads at Seven Oak Street, Assessor's Tax MAP 9 Block 2 Lot 6, in the Village Residential Zone. And it is the opinion of the zoning board of appeals that the applicant meets the relevant subsections of the land use ordinance, section 247.6A, 1 through 3, and B 1 through 9. 1 through 3, and B, 1 through 9. And do we want to add any additional? And if, you know, certainly if there are any changes that require the applicant to go outside of those provisions, she would have to come back to the zoning board, I guess.
That would allow for, you know, one person being hired. They would allow for that. So that's a, anybody second that motion?
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Show of hands. It's unanimous. So five members of the board. So we've approved your application.
Do you want me to read the findings?
Do you want to read them out?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Just make sure they're correct.
Okay, we're going to hear the findings from Dana.
Okay. So, Dear Ms. Carroll, to inform you that the zoning Board of Appeals has acted on a conditional use application for your home occupation as follows. The following members were present: Paul Canigan, Kevin McDonald, Kate Bauer Burke, Catherine Lethler, and Charles Tremblay. Findings of fact: The owners of the property are Daniel Carroll and Lisa Carroll pursuant to deed dated December 9th, 2024, and recorded in New York City Registry of Deeds in Book 19568, page 525. The applicant for home occupation is Lisa M. Carroll doing business as Bunk Breads. The property is located at 7 Oak Street in the Village Residential District identified in Assessor's Tax Map 9, Block 2, Lot 6, and is approximately .34 acres. The property is used as a single-family residence and the applicant seeks a conditional use for her home occupation, which is primarily a small home bakery business with no traffic to the residence for her own employment. The board found that the applicant's submission was complete, well-detailed, and specifically addressed each of the following referenced land use ordinance sections. The board waived the seven-day submission by mail requirement. What was the other?
The other was.
The date of the letter.
Materials to be submitted.
Materials to be submitted.
Right, it's the seven days. Oh, wait, that's the one that you just did. The other was, sorry.
The mailing.
The mailing.
Yeah. The seven-day submission of mail requirement and materials needed to be submitted prior to the meeting. Applicant submitted documentation of main Department of Agriculture, Conservation, Forestry, Division of Quality Assurance and Regulations General Inspection Report for approval by the state to have a home process license. Applicant confirmed no interest in having exterior signage for the home occupation. Applicant confirmed that the entire baking operations and home occupation use will remain within the residence at 7 Oak Street. Applicant confirmed that no traffic is planned or anticipated to the home occupation at their residence. Applicant stated that approximately 60 square feet of the premise kitchen and dining area will be used for the home occupation with a living area of 2,765 square feet, according to the assessment record. Letter was submitted for the record from abutters John Eagleson and Susan Graham residing at 12 Oak Street listed concerns with commercial use and possible expansion, traffic, and sales on-site. Tom Russell, resident at 7 West Street, inquired if approval of the home occupation will lead to a precedent for other uses. The zoning board appeals chair confirmed that conditional uses are decided on a case-by-case basis. Relevant to the sections of land use ordinance 7.6A, 1, 2, to 3, and B, 1 through 9, the sections provided as follows: The home occupation or profession which is accessory to the compatible with the residential use may be permitted as a conditional use by the Board of Appeals, provided that it is customarily carried out in the dwelling unit or structure customarily accessory to the dwelling unit. It is carried out primarily by a member or members of the family residing at the dwelling unit. It does not materially injure the character or usefulness of the dwelling unit or accessory structure for normal residential purposes. All home occupations shall conform with the following conditions: The home occupation shall be carried on wholly within the dwelling and accessory structure. The home occupation shall be carried on primarily by the member or members of the family residing at the dwelling unit. No more than two persons other than two family members residing in the dwelling unit shall be employed on the premise in connection with the home occupation. There shall be no exterior display or exterior signs other than those permitted under Article 6.12E. No exterior storage of materials, no other exterior indication of the home occupation or variation from the residential character of the principal building. Objectionable conditions such as noise, vibration, smoke, dust, electrical disturbance, odors, heat, glare, or activity at reasonable hours shall not be permitted. The traffic generated by such a home occupation shall increase the volume of traffic so as to create traffic hazard or disturb the residential character of the immediate neighborhood. In addition to the off-street parking requirements, to meet the normal requirements of the dwelling, adequate off-street parking shall be provided for the vehicles of each lot and the vehicles of the maximum number of users the home occupation may attract during the peak operating hours. Parking of no more than one vehicle used primarily to the home occupation shall be required explicit approval from the Board of Appeals. The home occupation may utilize no more than 20% of the dwelling unit floor area, provided that the purposes of this calculation, unfinished basement and attic space are not included, unfinished attic and basement spaces. One accessory structure, the floor area utilized for accessory structure should not exceed the floor area of the dwelling unit as calculated under paragraph A above. Except in the free enterprise and farm and forest zones, a home occupation shall not be permitted in a single-family dwelling in which there is an accessory apartment. Only one home occupation shall be permitted per dwelling. There is adequate parking at the property for the proposed use. The public hearing was held on August 11th, 2025, and was properly advertised, and all appropriate abutters were properly notified. Conclusions: Based on the above stated facts and the provisions of the ordinance cited above, the board concludes that the conditional use application for the home occupation be granted based on the information provided by the applicant and on the board's interpretation of the land use ordinance, conditioned on the continued adherence to the requirements of subsection 7.6. The vote for each of the three subsections, 7.6A, taken separately, was five in the affirmative and zero in the negative. The vote of the nine sections in 7.6B discussed separately but voted on collectively was five in the affirmative and zero in the negative. Accordingly, the board granted the application.
Brilliant. Can I just ask?
Yep.
Five, you have not here.
That's for five. Mine's numbered differently. Applicant confirmed that no traffic is planned or anticipated to the home occupation or their residence?
No, the traffic generated by such, shall not increase.
Let's see. The traffic generated by such home occupation shall not increase.
Yeah.
Yep.
And the deed reference was, the ownership of the property is Justin Lisa's name.
Oh, it is?
Yes. That was a conveyance from Daniel and Lisa to just Lisa.
Okay.
That was excellent. Thank you so much for doing that.
Yep.
All in favor of approving those findings of fact and conclusions of law? Unanimous?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
Well, I'm going to bring this meeting to a close. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Beaming is adjourned.
Where are you going to sell them? Which farmer's market?